Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, February 1st, 2016, and we have a regular session of council tonight. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and I see that all council members are present this evening. Our second item of business, though it's not on the agenda, is that we do need to amend our agenda. We have one additional ordinance. This is Ordinance 1816 regarding the depot lift station, and that has been discussed previously in council. So could I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, the agenda has been amended to add that ordinance. Next, we have communications. I have one particular communication that arrived to city council members from the City of Athens Police Department. It's a policy on the, complies with a higher revised code and gives an accounting of the expenditures for the law enforcement trust fund for the past year. And so council members have received that particular report from our City of Athens Police Chief. Are there any other communications from other elected council members? Okay, we'll move on to communications from other elected officials. Mayor Patterson.
I have a couple tonight, three to be exact. The first one is, we received a letter from the Ohio Department of Agriculture, and it has to do with gypsy moth captures in the greater Athens area, to include part of the Wayne. And they have identified that the population, albeit small, is with egg clusters and whatnot, it's growing. And so they are planning to do an aerial spray in mid-June. And from what I understand, it'll be the BioFlakes, which is plastic that's embedded with a pheromone that'll disrupt, and it adheres to the trees. However, initially, the plan was that it was drawn to capture part of the area for our wellhead protection, which our city engineer, Andy Stone, asked, requested that that not be included in, and it has been removed from that spray area so that will not be affected. Albeit that this type of bio spraying attaches to the leaves and sticks to the leaves and does not necessarily fall to the ground, however, there is an issue of FRAZ. So that came forward. Another thing that a lot of you have probably been tracking this, but the police department had a media release about the sexual assault cases. What I wanted to mention is that the Athens Police Department, as well as Ohio University Police Department, has increased foot patrol in the uptown area and other areas that, locations of concern. It also encourages anyone, especially students, to stay alert and be upstanding and active bystanders, and to visit the website www.OAESC.org/standup for information regarding being an upstanding, active bystander. If something does happen when you're out and about, be safe and be smart. Walking groups is another thing that's a personal plea of mine to individuals who are out late in the evening. And the last one, an up note, is the only award that the City of Athens gives out, which is the Athena Award. It's the timeframe for people nominating individuals for the Athena Award. The Athena Award is for individuals who improve the quality of life, for individuals living with disabilities, advocate for issues pertaining to individuals with disabilities, volunteerism that has a positive impact on individuals with disabilities, development of new programs or services impacting individuals with disabilities. That all said, if you know of someone that you think should be put forward as a nomination, that information can either be sent through my office and then sent on to the Commission on Disabilities, or directly reach out to the Commission on Disabilities chaired by Carolyn Lewis and Paige Strutton, I believe, is acting chair right now. So it's a good thing. Again, the deadline for that is March 1st for getting nominations in. So we're seeking nominations for a prestigious award. That's all I have.
Did you have a question?
I do.
Councilmember Cochran.
Mayor Patterson, do you have a URL you can share for the ODA biospraying program for folks who want to find out more information about that?
I'm sure we could put something up.
I know they do have some open houses affiliated with that as well, and I know, you know, some folks in my neighborhood and people that I know were concerned about that, and I wanted to be able to refer them to additional resources for information.
I know, I think the first public meeting is coming up at ODNR, February 4th. There was a lot of discussion on the New East Side Facebook page regarding, there were several URLs that were cited there, whether they're the real ones or not. But because many people received the letter from the Department of Agriculture, I did.
Okay.
So, a lot of information out there regarding that.
Does that conclude your report?
It does conclude my report.
Okay. Auditor Heck, I see that you're here. Do you have a report for us this evening? Okay, but thank you for being here, I appreciate it. We may have questions later. And Law Director Eliza.
Number four.
All right. Well, now move on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 216 is an ordinance authorizing engineering services for an outdoor municipal swimming pool. This is Project 292, and authorizing the auditor to borrow up to $500,000 for said services, introduced by Councilmember Butler. Are there comments? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. Again, I wanted to express my support for this ordinance. I know it's been contentious, and I do know that some of my colleagues on council have some concerns, and I think those concerns need to be heard. I know that we've spent lots of time and energy looking into this project, and there are many challenges associated with that. I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and open the floor. Thank you.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll recognize comments from council members and elected officials. We will allow an opportunity for other citizens, if they wish to speak, to have three minutes for a presentation. So, other council members, comments on this ordinance. Yes, Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I'd like to go forward. I've done a lot of soul searching on this whole pool issue and thinking about my comments for this evening, and I have to tell you, my confidence in the process has waxed and waned over the past year. In the fall of 2014, before the ballot initiative went up for vote, there was quite a lot of conversation about an auditorium, about an outdoor pool, is it a replacement pool? And I reviewed again what the ballot initiative says today, and for the purpose of paying any and all expenses associated with the construction of a swimming pool, as well as other maintenance items and items for arts parks and rec. And so, we've spent better part of a year now with a consultant, with our REC board making recommendations, discussing what kind of pool does the City of Athens want, and what kind of pool can we afford. And I, there was a lot of conversation about an auditorium and that kind of thing. And so what we've come down to at this point, when I read "outdoor pool," I wish it would read "outdoor aquatic center." I don't see the pool designs that we've been shown and whatever happens with the RFQ process, which is what this ordinance is about, expending the funds for that. To me, it's not what our community came to the public hearings, I was at every public hearing. It doesn't really include a lot of what our community asked for. So it is, it's very difficult for me to look at this ordinance and really go through with what the voters, what the voters said. And I remember one editorial back in the fall of 2014 that says, you know, "The wording of this ordinance isn't specific enough." And now that I know that, I have to, I tend to agree. I think we put the cart before the horse. I think that we should have been more specific with that. So that's, that's my general statement. I continue to be concerned with the comprehensive plan implementation costs, what we're really looking at in terms of a pool cost. When you look at similar designs by the consultants we used, similar designs cost a lot less than some of the pools that they've shown us with a similar footprint. It's confusing, it's, for an outdoor pool. The other piece that I'm concerned about is, when I asked a couple weeks ago, I think the mayor, you made this reference, I said, "Well, our bond council is suggesting anywhere 7.2, 7.5, probably we can borrow." And I said, "Well, what if our pool doesn't cost that much?" And, you know, "Well, we'll use it for these other items." And my understanding of our conversation, and maybe the auditor can help with this, is that this is strictly, when we go for a bond, for the pool, not for additional items. So, the numbers that have been thrown back and forth, either by the consultants, by our REC board, what we've heard here in council, has just been very confusing. And I don't know really what to believe. So that's another lack of where my confidence level is in terms of moving forward. So those are, I guess, my basic beginning comments for the evening regarding the pool complex.
Other council members? Any additional comments? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President. I have not been to a lot of hearings, and I have focused in on solely the question of whether I understand what is being offered at this point in time. My understanding of what we've been told is that even if we approve this, that the pool will not be done, the new pool will not be done in the coming year. That's the most crucial factor that I would vote on. I see no reason to rush this at this point in time. I would second everything that Councilwoman Pappas has said. I am totally dissatisfied with what we've heard as opposed to some of the other viewpoints that have been expressed. And I think the sole issue is, why are we rushing now if it's not going to be ready for the coming year? So that's my concern. Thank you.
I will offer one point of clarification, just to comment that Brent Stetter Carroll's timeline calls for engineering now so that the pool could be constructed for 2017. So you're right, not 2016, but even at this date, they need to do that much advanced planning to have it ready for the following year. But this is their, their original estimate of when it begins, so. Councilmember Fall.
I kind of want to back up some of the issues about confidence. I think that the planning process that has been presented to the public has been very confusing. And I think that with all the, my concern is to go forward with a very specific ordinance precludes the city being able to get RFQs that can satisfy some of the issues that have been brought up in the planning process that weren't addressed very well by the planning consultants. I think that it was a process that did not serve the public very well. And I don't have a lot of confidence in some of the recommendations that were put forward. And I think with people who've, like Mr. McGee, that it's very confusing, there's been so many scenarios and examples, and I would like, I don't know, examples of RFQs that would go forward. Everything ranged from aquatic centers with these big, like Marietta-style lazy pools and everything with other, it's just, concerns me that it's too amorphous, and I don't have a lot of confidence. And I think that points to the planning consultants, very much so. I don't think that they served us very well. Maybe it's that we didn't put enough questions to them. I don't, I don't know.
Any other council members have comments? Other elected, yes, Councilmember Costas.
Thank you. So, just for clarification, at this point, I think we can all agree that our outdoor pool has lived its life. So, you know, moving forward with, with something to replace what we need to replace, you know, for myself, that doesn't seem like too much of a request.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Not to necessarily double dip here, but again, I think along the lines of what Councilmember Costas is saying as well, when I went to vote, I was in the booth, and I'm thinking about this, passing this levy, that was exactly what was on my mind, is thinking we have this aging infrastructure that's over 40 years old. And even on our flyer that went out to the community in support of the, you know, supporting issue eight, construction of a new swimming pool. Current pool is over 40 years old, you know, how some of the funds will be spent. So for me, it's just a very simple issue to acknowledge that we have this aging infrastructure, and we want to replace that for our community.
Councilmember Pappy.
I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Butler, but we sat here in this room and talked to the citizens about throwing open all kinds of options for a pool. And we led them down this trail with all these public hearings for a period of time. And it doesn't say that, it may have said that there, but maybe not everybody got that. It doesn't say that, it just says "construction of a swimming pool." So, I mean, we can argue this back and forth forever, but the bottom line is the fairness to the voters is where I'm at in terms of the wording.
We'll open up comments to other elected officials. Mayor Patterson, did you have any comments you'd like to make at this point?
A couple. I mean, you know, I understand the fairness issue, Member Pappy, that you're referring to, and I agree. But I also think, in fairness, there's the vast majority of Athens populace that we've not even heard from yet. And my fear is this, that we now, and it's going to happen regardless, but if there were a new pool that was, or there was a RFQ where we found someone who we felt this person can build, you know, what we want, and they're still planning to be had with that, you know, keep this in mind. Brent Stetter Carroll's job was just to conceptually come up with what could be and to put price tags on things so that we have some sense as to what this is going to cost. But now I'm looking down at $150,000 likely to, to keep our current pool going if the liner is ripping and tearing out with nothing in the pipeline for replacing it the year after that. It could completely tank, no pun intended, the year after that. We don't know how well that's, you know, this isn't, you know, I'm not trying to put fear in anybody, but, you know, Andrew Chickie has done a fantastic job keeping the thing together as it stands right now, but there's only so far you can go with baling wire and eight penny nails to keep something together. The other thing, too, is I believe that we have gone through the exercise for a year and almost a half. We haven't gone through this for a long time. And the thing that keeps coming back to me is if we're going to, you know, if this is going to go forward, and if everyone decides, you know, the auditorium, I can't stress this enough, that there's going to be a deficit associated with that auditorium. And so for me, you know, who do I look at laying off if I have to sit there and figure out where I'm going to get 75, $100,000, whatever it's going to, you know, if this indoor pool is going to run in the red, which is likely to happen, at least that's what the numbers show in other municipalities of our size or within our range, you know, at what point, you know, do I make that call and go, you know, from a budget standpoint, this is not the way to go? You know, and I, I think indoor pools are fantastic. Although, again, I mentioned this last time, is that we're looking at having to change the job descriptions for those that, I mean, a lifeguard will be a lifeguard's lifeguard. However, now I'm going from seasonal employee to full-time. That, that changes the dynamic a lot. So I'm sitting there going, okay, to keep this pool going, or how, how responsible is that to the public? And I've had to do a lot of soul searching about this as well. When is, when do you go from being a prudent service to something that's just becoming a huge deficit, that you're having to find money somehow, some way, and you're squeezing it out of other things? And, you know, likely it could be a job. It could be, I just, I won't hire this person because the pool is constantly running at too large of a deficit for me to justify. Whereas the outdoor pool, the numbers have been there for a long time to where the outdoor pool runs, you know, is pretty much breaking even and maybe up some. It's not a generation thing, it's just, you know, what is the wise way to go? So, that's my concern. I think that a lot will come out with, with the RFQs in terms of finding a good builder, you know, to put this forward. Another concern that I've heard is $500,000 for engineering design, design engineering of the pool, while typically we're talking 8%, 10% that comes from our city engineer, you know, when it comes to the design engineering for a project moving forward. So it's, that fits right in with a, you know, a five to seven million dollar project, depending on what the project comes in at. So, that's all I've got to say. I, I know that the process, I was all on board back in July of last summer of slowing things down before we went into recess, when I was still on council, to sit there and go, "Well, things don't look right, something's funny here." But we've been doing this, we've been holding back on this, you know, the citizenry on what they're already paying taxes for right now, and sitting there putting the, you know, talking about putting the stops to that, and I just don't find that as being wise.
Auditor Heck, do you want to, I know there've been a few queries and questions on finances, and you might have some information for us that would help. Thank you.
One of the first questions, Member Pappy, was about the bond, whether it be for the pool, whether it be other money be used for other things. That would be up to council. My recommendation would probably be take out a bond for the pool, whatever you decide, and any other projects that, that reach the amount of money that you need to borrow for to do it separately. However, you can do that. If you know of another project, you can roll it into that bond, and as long as you know what you're, you're going to do. I don't recommend borrowing extra money just in case, okay, at all. And I'm not really sure our bond council would go for that if we didn't have a good reason for borrowing money. This is a lot of debt to take on. Any money that's left, say after the design engineering costs, which as, you know, the mayor said, seems high, but for the, the price of this project, it, it isn't. I'd be surprised if we went over that amount. Any extra money, and I think we talked about this two weeks ago, would stay in that fund for the purposes of that bond levy. They wouldn't go anywhere else just because we had extra money left over for that. This has been a long process, and the mayor addressed this a little bit. It's been over a year since that ballot was passed. I think citizen input is wonderful. I've lived here 35 years, I've been involved in, worked for the city for 14, I've been involved in a lot of this. We updated the comprehensive plan when I was on council. Now, those were some interesting meetings at the community center. We have a wide variety of people here, it's wonderful, but you're not going to please everybody every time. I think that, I know that when this bond went on the levy, it had to be turned in to the Board of Elections in July. They have to have it 90 days out from the election, and then it gets approved. So I think when this actually went to the Board of Elections, there was only talk about the one pool. Now, it did come up right after that, you know, it wasn't on any of the flyers that went out in the fall. I'm not saying people weren't starting to think big. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. But I think it's time to move forward with this pool. We know there was an intent to replace the existing pool when that was put out there. I've had people I know, people I don't know, come to my office, and there's support for another levy for an indoor pool. I don't know that that would be necessary. But we also don't have a big plan for the additional money that, that we expect to take in from this levy. And I agree with Member Pappy with what she said two weeks ago, we should have a plan. It shouldn't be just, you know, spent here and there and everywhere. This is, this money is spoken for and should go to where the citizens want it. And it's a long process. I understand that, you know, you might think we shouldn't start now, but it's a long process. Aside from, once you approve this, there's, there's a timeframe for going out to bid, reviewing the bids, picking a consultant for the design engineering, then when we, then we have to decide on the pool and whatever their amount is. It could be the 7.3, it could be 5, it could be anything, depending on the process and what we finally ask them to, to present. Then we have to go through our bond council, as I said, for a couple months of reviewing our bond rating. And so, yes, it, it needs to start sooner rather than later to even happen in 2017. It really does. Yeah, the citizen input process is wonderful, and we have a lot of people here, there's a lot of different ways we can help them. But I just think in this particular instance, the purpose was to replace that aging pool. And I'd just like to see us move forward with that. It's possible, when I look at this, and I know Todd and I disagree on the Bowling Green study, but I've, I read it, it's a notebook if anybody else wants to see it. And I've talked to someone from there who was involved in that process. They did not spend that much money on their outdoor pool, but they put over $10 million on their indoor pool. So it depends on what you want to have at each pool, how much you're willing to spend. And I, I believe we wanted more in our outdoor pool than what they did. And so, so if you add them together, you know, we're going to come up with the, you know, a different amount for, for what we want and what they spent and got, for their outdoor pool only. So, I don't know, does anybody have any questions for me about anything else? Those are just my comments.
Councilmember Reisman.
You mentioned our bond rating, it'll be coming up for review, what, four months?
It's not up for review, no, not in particular. It's just if we go out for a, a bond. These bonds are not the same as, as when we borrow locally, as we do most of the time. But when you go to borrow, and it, it wasn't a big deal when we borrowed the money for the parking garage. It was under $2 million. We did not go out nationally for the kind of bond issue that we are talking about with this.
But we're talking about Reddys, Moody's, and...
Yes, Moody's is who we would be dealing with, yes. And it's very important because it does affect our, our interest rate.
Yes.
But it's, it's a, it's a big and interesting process in my mind, I've been through it. That one took several months, but that was the first one we'd gone through in a long time. That was when we refinanced the community center bond, saved the city $350,000 by doing that at that point, it was a 10-year mark in that. But it's involved, and it involves council members, the mayor, treasurer, my office, and meeting with our bond consultants, putting together a book, and then we present to Moody's. At that time, we did it with a conference call, but we had sent them, you know, pictures of Athens and all kinds of other things. I mean, it involves not just the city and what we do, it involves our community and our ability to sustain that bond payment. So, and then they tell us whether we can keep our rating, which is good, we have a good rating. But that's the big thing, is we don't want them to look at it and then lower our rating.
I think Councilmember Pappy has a question for you.
So, thank you for clarifying. I, I think it is important when we look at the bond to stick with the pool. I, I don't know, I, unless there's a lot of good documentation, I mean, I, it seems to me that could affect our bond rating, so, I mean, we've been pretty clear.
From the bookkeeping standpoint, yes.
Because there's other money. There's, over the, over the 20 years, there's six... Because there's other money, there's, over the 20 years, there's $16 million apparently, give or take, depending on...
Probably 13 or 14, for sure. If we're lucky, it'll end up like the last one, we'll have some extra money at the end. But, yes, it's a lot of money that we'll be bringing in, and yes, it keeps it very clean, because this is a, you know, 20-year process, probably, we'll take this bond out for, or 16 was the community center, probably be something more like that. But, a long time, it's a long time, and we have to report to the state and everybody else and make those payments, and it would be cleaner, I would prefer that. And as I said, there are people who are willing to go out and, you know, do another pool separately, but that would be another issue to decide what you want involved in that.
Thank you. Thanks for the comment.
I wanted to make a comment.
Yes. Well, Director Olynyk.
Mr. McGee was asking me a question, and he, his question was, what did the ordinance say? And the ordinance said a swimming pool, the ballot language said a swimming pool. And councilmember Pappy said that maybe it wasn't specific enough, the wording wasn't specific enough. But, that oftentimes happens when an ordinance statute isn't clear, or people don't believe it to be clear. So, there's a basic tenet of law that you look at the legislative intent. And here in Athens, our council meetings, our committee meetings are taped, and it's possible to go back, and I think many of the council people did go back and listen to exactly what was said during those meetings. So, I wanted to...
Thank you for the comment, that helps. I'll open it up for any other comments or from the audience, and what I would like to do is, if someone wants to speak tonight who has not spoken before, is anybody interested in speaking, who has a new comment, yes, Ms. Hollow? Oh, no, about the pool, about the pool for right now. Okay, yes.
I have spoken, of course, I do.
Okay, that's okay. Come on up and...
Is the microphone there?
The microphone is there, yes. And Mr. Pinterhoff? Yes, if you could tell us your name and address for the audience.
Yes, I'm Peter Hoff in Pinter, I live on Columbia Avenue. I've been around Athens for about 48 years, on and off, and I think there has been, there was confusion about the pool, but the initial public meetings, there was, there seemed to me to be a cant already toward an open pool. There were several versions of the open pool presented, one version of an auditorium. There is a problem with the money, I agree with that. It would cost 125, some figure like that, to have an auditorium. However, my suggestion was this, that, and I spoke to the mayor about it, and the previous mayor, to have a drawing, a set of plans for an auditorium, well done, with the cost just as we did for the open pool, then present it to the public in an election, will point out to them that if they do elect the closed pool, then there would be a small levy associated with it, a 0.05 percent, something like that. The current levy will bring in $600,000 a year or so, I believe, so a small levy like that would bring in about half that. That would be more than enough to run the pool and have some left over. Now, if the citizens see that, and they want that, they vote for it. If they don't want that, they vote for the other, and they have an open pool. But, so far, they don't have a choice. Everything has been inclined toward the open pool. That is my point. And also, I think that in a time, and I'm a swimmer, so I'm obviously a little bit biased, but it's a very progressive move to have an auditorium, and it'll do something for the people that are above the age of 20, if you look at the demographics in this town, they will have something available all year. The mayor's indicated that he was looking at having something of therapeutic pool, a limited one, and attached to the community center. I think there's difficulties with that, it's a very nice idea, but I think that perhaps the people should decide whether they want the pool, the closed pool, pay for it, or they say, no, we don't want it, we don't need it, then stay without that pool, and I think that neither group will be satisfied, but that was this final decision that was made. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Abel, our former mayor, our Recreation Advisory Council Chair, who spent a lot of time in the planning on this, the long-range plans for the Arts Parks and Recreation Program since 2014, and then the advisory committee came forth with a recommendation this summer. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. You're correct, I've been on the advisory board for, well, the end of this month will be four years. And one of the first meetings we had, it was, what are we gonna do about that old pool? And we talked and talked about it and said, well, in another three or four years, we're gonna end and pay for the community center, let's just ask the voters for, to continue this, so it's no new taxes, and replace the pool, and do other things that are necessary. And that's what we did. But, also, the other thing is, you know, I was in elected office here for 26 years, and we talked about the pool, we knew it was our outdoor pool, because for 70 years, all the cities ever owned is an outdoor pool. And for probably all those years, all, the only thing the university's ever owned is an indoor pool. And so, when you talked about the university's pool, you knew it was the indoor pool, primarily for university use, but the community always had a use, you know, availability to it. I remember as a teenager, I swam in an auditorium across from Scott Quad, you know, that was, that was what we did. And I think one of the other things that is maybe not quite as apparent, particularly to the public, is that there are two kinds of income taxes in this world. And one is the general income tax that is totally at the discretion of the legislative body of the city, i.e., we have 1.4 percent money to run all of the general fund functions of the city. In addition to that, we have a half of a percent, a half of a half of a percent, I guess, to go to the operations of the community center, a tenth of a percent to go to the streets, and now, we've renewed and have a tenth of a percent to Arts Parks and Recreation. And we, as imperfect as we are, wrote legislation, and the voters passed it with 59 percent of the vote. So, I think that they did speak pretty loud and clear, and I know, in my letter that I wrote to the editor, I was clear, I said it was replacing the old pool, you know, and I know in the flyer it was that way. I know I got criticized, and council got criticized a lot during the campaign by a few people that wrote letters to the editor that said, where is the planning, why haven't you more defined this? We don't know what we're getting. And so, that's why we've made the letter out, that's why we did the letter to the editor, that's why we did the flyer. But, 59 percent of the people said, we want to support Arts Parks and Recreation. And, you know, we've been trying to deliver that. We have a master plan that we put out in late 2013. It doesn't talk at all about anything other than replacing of the existing pool, and it talks about other items, like our trails, you know. We've got, as I mentioned before, a bike path that goes from Stimson Avenue to the wastewater treatment plant that was built by Mayor Beckett, and that was, let's see, 29 years ago, and it's never been repaved. We've got nice little alligator tracks in it, and filled with tar and such, but somewhere in this 20 years, we're gonna have to replace that. And that's not cheap either. So, we do have other plans of other things, and we have done a draft letter, submitted it to council, and to the administration of the types of things that we would spend the balance of the money on. One of the things also to remember is, nine years ago, when Kevin Sportsbrock resigned as rec. director, in my last year in office, we didn't replace him. We've never replaced that position, we've made a director, but we lost an assistant director. So, we've cut the staff. Meanwhile, we've added trails, you, and this just in the last term, added park land on the south side of town. We added a lot of areas within the South Park area, and in behind Townsend Drive, and behind Lake Hope, or Pope Drive, with all of the idea of building some trails and doing some stuff and... But, so, there is a plan. It's a rough plan, it needs community discussion, sure, but we, it's not that we've not worked on it, we have. I would urge you to pass this, because I think the other thing, Councilwoman McGee in particular, is what's the timeline of construction?
Right.
Because when we start talking about, okay, we're just gonna pass this in February, hopefully, then you've gotta go get, you know, review the RFQs, then you've gotta award somebody, then they've gotta design it. And then, that's when we get, hopefully, a cost that's pretty close, subject to the construction bids. Then, you're gonna be asked to do bonds in anticipation, or borrow money in anticipation of bonds, then you're gonna construct it. If we find the right contractor, I didn't, too deep into the season, but, you know, when you start construction in the fall, we don't know what the winters are gonna be like around here, we don't know if we're gonna be done by June 1st or, you know, Memorial Day. It takes a while to do this type of project and this size, we need all of that time that's there. And I think that it's important that, you know, we reassure the public to do that, but we're gonna do some more planning on this. We didn't even like option two with the advisory board, because it moved the pool close and wiped out the parking lot in front of the pool, and put it too close to East State Street, we thought. We didn't want to be like another city close by that main drag was right there by the pool. We didn't want that, we want that parking lot still there, in ours, but, now, those are the types of things that we have to work out with the design engineers, and I would urge you to continue on and pass this. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments.
Any questions you have? Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments from members in the audience about the pool? Yes, Mr. Swearingen.
May I ask for the same six minutes the citizen Abel was granted?
Three minutes, Mr. Swearingen, please, thank you.
Okay. It's, first, hit the talking points, hammer the talking points home, create a little fear, a little confusion, a little concern, hammer the talking points some more, cherry-pick some talking points, invent new talking points as you go, but ignore the facts, or the facts that are inconvenient. One, is this BCI's time schedule, or is this the city of Athens' time schedule? Or any construction company or consultant's time schedule? It's the city of Athens. Two, the money bought for the pool, or borrowed for the pool, is not gonna be 7.3 million. Borrow for principal, or for the materials and labor, basically, you don't borrow for the interest payment every year, you don't borrow for the operational costs every year. So, the city's not gonna borrow 10. some odd million, as might be borrowed in Bowling Green or whatever, which we don't even know what size that $10 million pool is, we're comparing apples to an unknown quantity in order to create discontent, or concern, or fear. So, let me just read this, I think it was 2 minutes and 42 seconds when I rehearsed it. "I have no doubt that some will take great umbrage with what I'm about to say. Some will thrash about like a fish out of water, attempting to defend their past remarks and actions concerning the replacement pool." From the Athens News, September 30th of last year. Earlier this year, the APR advisory board recommended the city proceed with exploring design and construction based on one of the most expensive outdoor pool concepts presented by BCI, about 7.3 million, quote-unquote, or, uh, per in, closed per in. Because Abel, Rick Abel, said, "The advisory board recommended about 60 percent of the levy funds, open per in, set to bring in about 14 and 16 million dollars over 20 years, closed per in, go toward construction of a replacement outdoor pool." That, that's between, and this is, end of quote, "That's between 8.4 million that was authorized or recommended, and 9.6 million, 60 percent, of a projected 14 to 16 million dollars in levy receipts." Fast forward to council's meeting, January the 11th, where councilwoman Pappy asked what 7.3 million means. According to Rick Abel, "We felt," quote-unquote, "that 55, 58, somewhere in there, would be a reasonable amount of money could vote on the pool, vote to the pool." That's between, that's two weeks ago, three weeks ago, that's between 8.8 and 9.28 million, presuming 16 million dollars in levy receipts. It's between 9.3 and 9.8 million, when using the same six, when using the 16 million dollars that's been bandied about on several occasions over the past year. It's, I figure, maybe. On September 28th, Rick Abel states 7.3 million to be about 58 percent. When in reality, it's not, it's 45 percent of 16 million. But, they've always said about 58 percent. It's, on January 11th, Mr. Abel, in the same room, states 7.3 million is 55 to 58 percent, which is actually 43.2 to 46 percent, not 55 percent, not 58 percent, not 60 percent. That can't be right.
Read fast.
It's, so, the numbers don't add up as little as three weeks ago. "As an outdoor facility will almost certainly come in under 7.3 million cap, the final allocation for a pool could easily be above, or in the 35 percent range, not 58 percent, Mr. Abel says the advisory board recommended." Oddly, 7.3 million coincides closely with the sum total of projected cost for the other projects and the 7.3 million, and that's about 16 million. Very convenient number. The council's being asked to give second reading to ordinance 00216 and eventually vote on it, even though the numbers still don't add up, as little as three weeks ago. On September 28th, the numbers are off by at least 1.5 million, on January 11th, the numbers were off between 1.5 and 1.8, or 1.98 million, excuse me. What is plainly apparent is that the city's inner circle on this project keeps moving the goalposts, even they don't know what their numbers mean. The only thing they do know is that they must continue to cover up the gross incompetence that began in 2014, the poor planning, the lack of planning, that unfortunately, continued to cover up now amounts to almost nothing short of fraud, supported by the fact that their own numbers don't mean what they say they do. I said, come close, not committed. But, and someone needs to ask, do these people have any idea whatsoever the number of opportunities that we permanently lost as a result of the deception being orchestrated on the citizens of Athens? It's not just the loss of an indoor pool, an auditorium that's being perpetrated here, it includes the permanent loss to other projects, which the city concurrently has on its table, as well as numerous losses that will occur sequentially after that. But, the list is lengthy once council sets this ball in motion. As a result of the vast inconsistencies from the beginning to this date, I would ask, one, that council table 00216, that an in-depth and fully transparent admission be made to the public, that a proposal to remedy these errors be placed before the public, and allow the public to decide, not the city's inner circle, and I don't mean council here, because you guys are the only stopgap measure in this whole process, not the city's inner circle, if the attempt should be made for a second levy, before any commitment is made by council to any swimming pool of any sort and/or any recommendation within or pertaining to ordinance 02, or 00216. Anything short of that isn't a Band-Aid, it's perpetuation of deceit upon the public.
Thank you very much.
Perpetuation of deceit.
I don't think that there are any other comments, I'll ask one more time. And what we'll do is now move on to the next ordinance for the second reading. This is 0316, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant, introduced by councilmember Butler. Ordinance 416, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency and declaring an emergency, introduced by councilmember Butler. Ordinance 516, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a water agreement with the Leax Regional Water District to release upon annexation certain property within their service area to the city of Athens, this is introduced by councilmember Fall. Ordinance 616, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23, zoning code, to change the zoning of a residential health care, to change the zoning of residential health care facilities, introduced by councilmember Fall. Ordinance 716, an ordinance determining to proceed with the assessment procedure in sidewalk improvements on Central Avenue, North Congress Street, and South May Avenue, which is Project 294, as described in Resolution 715 and declaring an emergency, introduced by councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 816, an ordinance authorizing engineering services for the East State Street, US 33, Project Number 288, introduced by councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 916, an ordinance authorizing improvements on Franklin Avenue, Project 301, introduced by councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 1016, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance and authorizing salary increases for certain positions in Athens County Municipal Court to be paid retroactively, introduced by councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 1116, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, introduced by councilmember Reisner. Councilmember Reisner.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Uh, the reason for the need to suspend is the municipal court is under a time limit or deadline to fill a new position for their first offender diversion program coordinator.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules for ordinance 1116. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
Uh, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1116.
Second.
And, uh, for the reasons stated, the court would like to move on this position as soon as possible to get this, uh, new diversion program coordinator and program going.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 1116. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries 6 to 1. The ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 1216, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $35,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's recreation center, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And now we'll have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1316, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a salt truck, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President. We discussed this last week. It's a pretty basic ordinance, uh, authorizing, uh, the purchase of a salt truck. We're thinking around $100,000. It's a replacement of a truck that's, uh, about 25 years old and, uh, has served its life.
Served it well.
Any other information? Thank you. Ordinance 1416 is an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, and introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules for 1416.
And the reason being?
Reason being, there's several items in the appropriation ordinance that, for amendment, that need to occur almost immediately. Among them is the, uh, our general fund for the city council, our operational fund, and I believe also, um, we're looking at the parking garage fund 730 transfer. I think we should get that done immediately, so, that's my reasons.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for suspending the rules for ordinance 1416. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
I move that we adopt 1416. Now, is there a question?
I do. So this is a payment on the construct, the current construction costs for the parking garage? Is that what we're talking about here?
We're authorizing the, the enter fund transfer from 730 to 758 for an amount of 1,000, of $161,000.
I see, that's a payment.
Is that going to be a payment? Okay.
The first payment.
First payment.
Any other questions about ordinance 1416 and the appropriations? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 1416. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Any ordinances adopted. Ordinance 1516 is an ordinance amending ordinance 116, Stormwater Repair on North Port Street, Project 300, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. As you acknowledge, this was amended, and the amount was changed from 90,000 to 117,000. This was, if you recall, this was the project in which, um, our street director, Public Works Director Andy Stone, was able to determine that there was--
And is there a need to suspend on this one or not?
I, uh, the clerk was checking in also as well with--
I didn't get this far.
Okay, from the safety director.
Okay, it's fine.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1616 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 5, Public Utilities, Chapter 5.02, Garbage and Rubbage, Section 5.0203D, Preparation and Storage, Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.12, Premises and Conditions, Section 29.12.02 Citation, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Um, thank you, Madam President. This is just to amend the code to include an appeals process, which is legally responsible thing to do.
Ordinance 1716 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.03, Transient Guest Tax, Section 17.03.01, Definitions, to Include Bed and Breakfast, and amending certain sections of Title 23 zoning code, Chapter 23.04, Permitted Uses, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I think that this particular, um, topic has been confused by a lot of stuff that's been coming forward with, um, Airbnbs, and people coming and talking about Airbnbs, and what the Planning Commission has, um, suggested to change things. So I would like to maybe, um, I, I think it's fine to, um, change the transient guest tax, because right now, any BNB is not covered necessarily. However, I think that some of the definitions and such have, um, there's some confusion with how many bedrooms in the bed and breakfast versus how many rooms are a hotel, and for some reason, hotel is defined as five and more, and bed and breakfasts are defined as three and less, and so if you have a four-bedroom, you're a special non-entity. So I think that there's some cleaning up of the language that needs to happen, because I think that fell out in between the definitions. And, um, there's been some talk about, um, some questions and issues about what's going on in Title 23. So I would like to separate them, so we can talk about the transient guest tax, and then, um, I think that there's too much confusion right now, so I'm thinking about opening up for discussion quickly tonight, and then tabling it. How's that?
Okay.
I just, there's, it bothers me that four bedrooms is now completely out, and I think that there's just been some miscommunication with what's gone on, because of all the stuff that came in, and talking about Airbnbs, and having all sorts of people come and muddling the discussion, because that's not what the Planning Commission ever put forward for discussion.
And is your thought, okay, so, and you may not have the answers to this, but my question would be, is your thought to table it for two weeks until February 15?
Maybe what we can do is, I know there, there, um, we've had some public input, maybe what has to, what I would like to do is put it on the committee meeting for next Monday, to have specifically what is going to be talked about in relation to the Planning Commission recommendations that have been put forward. And then we can bring it up on the next Monday afterwards as an ordinance.
Okay.
Because I think it's just too confusing. I've had lots of people call about what exactly are we doing, and lots of people think that it's all about bed and, um, Airbnbs, which it is, but that's been talked about for the last two and a half months, and so, does that make sense? Probably not.
I, I think it makes sense. The only thing I need to do is make sure I'm doing the right thing procedurally, because I think when you make a motion to table--
So I guess maybe what we need to do--
To table, please. But you stop discussion, when, once there's a motion to table. And I know we have people here to talk tonight, so before we make the motion to table--
That's what I would--
Why don't we recognize the people in the audience, and then you can make that motion? And I know, Ms. Hollow, you were here to make some comments. Did you, did you want to offer any comments about this, or? We want to get some comments right now, since you have taken the time to come tonight, and anybody else in the audience who has comments about it. It may aid our discussion at committee meeting next week, so, thanks for taking the time.
My name is Betty Hollow, and last week, I went to the public hearing where the mayor was introducing us to his plans for the city for this next term. And one of the things he mentioned was that he hopes to review and update the comprehensive plan in this next year. The current plan describes and makes recommendations for each of Athens' neighborhoods, and the recommendations for each of those neighborhoods is the same, to maintain low-level density in residential neighborhoods, and to discourage the growth of R3 zones within those neighborhoods. So I'm hoping that Mayor Patterson and you will continue to support these goals, and consequently, I suggested to him at the public meeting, and I'm suggesting to you tonight that you resist any current pressure to move quickly to change the current city codes. I don't think that there's any particular urgency for this to happen right away. I think the mayor is new, some of you are new, there's a lot of confusion about what is happening. So, uh, it seems to me that it would be useful for you to take some time to actually look at the current comprehensive plan, and work with the mayor to develop a new comprehensive plan, to study what's happening in other cities. I know you've done some of that, but maybe not as much as you might. And I believe that if you wait for a revised plan for the city, it will allow you to make a better, um, comprehensive plan, and that the changes that you make to the current code, if you do make any, will best serve the town itself and its own residents. As I've said, I hope that the changes will only be ones that contribute to the low density, and therefore, the state stability of our neighborhoods. Uh, I believe that creating a whole new category of rentals in a town where there's already 70 to 75% rental housing, um, would be the most prudent thing to do. I'm sorry, I think I said that wrong. Creating it would not be the most prudent thing to do. Therefore, I hope you will consider slowing down, waiting for an update of the plan, and then that you'll take a second look at the changes that you think will benefit most of the people in our town. I do have one other specific comment to make. In the current code, in addressing permitted uses in R1 districts, this current wording clearly limits transients in R1 districts. If you allow bed and breakfast in these zones, that restriction will be eliminated, which is part of the process here that's being hoped for by some people. In my mind, this contradicts the current comprehensive plan's goals of discouraging transients in our zones, limiting the growth of R3 zones near neighborhoods, and reducing density and traffic in those zones. So, thank you very much.
And do we have any other comments that folks from the audience would like to make tonight, on this particular ordinance?
And I, I think that, I apologize if things have been rather confusing on this process. I think that people got way ahead with coming in to, um, discuss Airbnbs. I think it got, just snowballed with what was put forward by the Planning Commission. We did put the Planning Commission recommendations that were recommended last year that we actually had a public hearing on, I put, um, we put that on the Drive Cloud Computer Box thing. And so, I would like to take this time, because I think it's too confusing, and some of the wording has not worked out with all the discussion that we've had. And so I'd like to bring concrete wording next week, so that everybody knows what's going on, and then an ordinance can be introduced if the committee so chooses. How's that? So I would like to table this.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to table ordinance 1716. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ordinance has been tabled.
Thank you.
Did you have a date certain on that? Do you have a date certain for bringing it?
I would like to bring it--
Is that part of the motion?
Um, oh, can I bring it, oh, you mean to bring it--
I think you said that before.
Yeah, next month, two weeks. With a Monday committee discussion. So we already know we need a committee meeting on Monday.
Okay. Thank you. All right, our next ordinance is 1816, and you may not see it on the agenda up here. This is the one that was added when we amended our agenda earlier this evening. Um, ordinance 1816 is an ordinance amending ordinance 1815, authorizing construction and construction engineering services for the Depot Lift Station, which is Project 286, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. A Depot Lift Station is not necessarily a very exciting subject matter, but it is something that is terribly important, especially to, this particular one, to citizens on the West Side. This moves our, um, solid waste and sewer material, uh, and if it's not working properly, then we can imagine it's not a pretty site. The Public Works Director, Andy Stone, has been diligently working on, um, this, and I believe was, um, this had to be rebid, because it was initially thrown, or the bid was exceeding, I believe, over a million dollars, which is not acceptable. So we went about the process of retooling it, rebidding it. The mayor also has more information on this, and updates, because this was just coming in to us late this afternoon, and I think he's more in the know than I am. Thank you, Mayor.
You summed up everything pretty well with the, having to go back out to bid again. Bids came in this afternoon, there was two bids. There was essentially, kind of, three possible scenarios. First scenario is, it comes in below the anticipated cost of this, which was, um, I believe roughly $625,000 for the bid itself, but there was also a 10%, which is legal to a 10% above window. And this, uh, one of the bids, uh, was well above that, the other one was within that 10% window, um, at $689,000, and 900, so, and change to that particular bid. This bid also, um, included a couple of things that are much needed within the bid itself to include, this is a deep well. Uh, this particular lift station is a very deep one, having to lift sewage from the hospital corridor, the west side of the city, up, uh, the West Union Hill, and then on towards the wastewater treatment plant, along with that deep well, and that's where a lot of the cost came from, was having to excavate very deeply down, but, uh, to put another access manhole as well as including in this. This is one of those areas, this has been discussed with the water treatment plant, how are, we have several different types of electrical currents coming into the building. This depot lift station also has kind of an oddball current coming into it, a voltage coming into it, and therefore, uh, this will allow for correction to that as well, where it's kind of on the standard 480, um, coming into the building. There was also already $835,000 that had been appropriated. Uh, this would be, with the bid coming in, within that 10% window, this is, uh, would be an increase or an additional $308,000 to move this forward. And as Member Butler explained, this is a critical lift station. We have a lot of citizens living in that, this affected area. The city has already come up with, our city engineer, Andy Stone, has already purchased some of the equipment. What we'll do is the screens that are part of the lift station, the screens, that has fallen on, on the city, we've purchased those already, and also, um, looking to purchase a portable, um, bypass pump, um, a high volume, which is a good idea to do, because now we'll have a pump in our inventory to where, and lift stations somewhere else in the city were to ever fail, and we needed to bypass pump, this-- fail and we needed to bypass pump, this pump can do that, but it also brings down, helped bring down the cost for the bid itself because now we weren't having to rent or lease a pump by the hour, which has an exorbitant price tag to it in comparison to this bypass pump. So there you have it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I do know we, our auditor is present as well, if there are any other questions too, because I know she was tackling this late into the afternoon, too.
And council member Fall?
Well, it's coming out, the sewer debt fund, the sewer fund.
It is.
And the sewer fund is, is a fairly healthy fund, which is a dedicated fund, so, it's kind of, has a buffer, pillow for this sort of thing, so.
Thank you, councilman. Were there any questions for our, as well, while we're talking about this? Okay.
Thank you.
Am I correct, yes, am I correct in understanding that, do we need to make a motion to suspend this ordinance? Was there...
We do need a suspension on this.
Okay.
And it's because of some of the time constraints that we're under for the grant funding that we've already received, we need to move forward with this, you know, in fear of possibly losing that grant funding and the whole thing will unravel rather quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. At this juncture, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 1816.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 1816. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Thank you, President Nisley. Having heard what we just discussed and talked about and the mayor's relevant points, I would like to make a motion for us to adopt ordinance 1816.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments, questions? Motion and a second to approve ordinance 1816. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some announcements and other business. The first of which is the appointment of the local Board of Tax Review, the members who, citizens who had agreed to serve on this, those names were announced last week. What this does is sets up a board of review if citizens have questions or appeal a tax assessment, so they're used on an as-needed basis. The term is an appointment of three years, and the citizens who have agreed to serve on this are Mr. Bick Weisenreiter, Mr. Steve Sloan, Mr. Rick Abel, and serving as an alternate is Ms. Anne Gabriel, so we thank all of those persons, and I would entertain a motion for their approval of their appointment.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval of these appointments to the local Board of Tax Review. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Other announcements, committee assignments I would like to handle next, and we heard that planning and development will be requiring a committee meeting next week on Monday night. Other committees that need to meet? Transportation does?
Probably Finance and Personnel.
Finance and Personnel, possibly? Okay. Okay. And...
I'm not positive at the moment yet.
On Service Safety?
Yeah, I can, I'll have a discussion with the safety director.
Okay, the clerk will need to have notice by Thursday so we can get the agendas out, so thank you on that. Do we have other announcements from elected, elected officials? Yes, Mayor Patterson?
I just had one item. As many of you know, the Community Energy Savers Program was, it didn't end, but the last day for getting things in in terms of assessments of homes and whatnot was yesterday. But what I do want to mention, and this is somewhat dated, it was, reflects data through January 8th, and that is that AEP Ohio for that element was at the 92% level of making the goal of 100 or excess of that, and Columbia Gas was at the 93%. So I just wanted to share that. But that doesn't capture anything, obviously, from January 9th through the end of the month, so we're very hopeful that that goes forward, that we win the prize.
Good. I hope we do. All right, we have, are there any other announcements? Okay. We do have an opportunity now for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not on the agenda earlier this evening. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for adjourning our meeting tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Our meeting is adjourned at 8:17. Thank you.